It is six thirty one watch, we will officially call the Board of Commissioners, Solid City Board of Commissioners meeting to order let us all stand for the protection. Our Father, our God, our Redeemer and our Fixer. We ask now that you be in the midst of this meeting, that you have us to do everything in D C in order, that you provide us the wisdom to do what is right and pleasing in your side for the citizens of this community. This is John Boeservis prayer, in Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen. Let's leave it.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The answer is you will read the side of the
statement. To advance a framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Mr. Patterson, if you will read our vision statement.
Solid City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Hey, thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Not this time, Mary. I have one there. Um, I think one on the new business, I'd like to take that off the agenda and schedule that for a budget workshop.
And second, it's been a little bit probably second, is any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, have the same right. Senator, don't get a motion, put it in Senator.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, moving properly second, are there any questions? All in favor, signify by a sign of aye. All opposed, have the same right. I don't want to get, um, it's still go back and approve the agenda and then next to the
Uh, moving to approve the agenda with the adjustment.
Second, it's been moving probably second, any question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, have the same right. Motion, Gary. Okay, we are there. Presentations, I guess that is what is next. We have some dedicated people who are have given quite a few years to the town of Solid City and have decided that they're retiring. It must be a great thing to have worked long enough to retire. I hope to give that one day. So if I could ask, uh, Mr. A minute, work with me. Mr. Tony Lackey and Mr. Joseph Smith. If you guys would come forward. Now, to turn back, I don't know which one it's, which John gonna have to help me out here. Which, who is Mr. Smith and who is Mr. Uh, Lackey? Smith, all right. Excuse me, Lackey, Lackey, all right, let me see if I can get her, I mean, what are you doing on my Hey, gonna have to bear with me because I'm gonna do the best I can with this. So I'm going to start off with Mr. Smith. Whereas Joseph L. Joseph Lee Smith was hired as a public works laborer for the Solid City Street Maintenance Department on February nineteen ninety-five and whereas Joseph Lee Smith became just distribution and collection supervisor for the Solid City Public Works and Utilities Department of July the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas Joseph Smith became operations superintendent for the Solid City Public Works Utilities Department on September twenty-nine, two thousand and eight, and whereas Joseph L. Smith became public works superintendent for the Solid City Public Works Department on September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eight, and whereas whereas his dedicated interest and devotion to duty have had a valuable effect on the efficiency of Public Works and Utilities Department and whereas he has reached the age of retirement and desires to devote his efforts and energies to other areas. Now, whereas be it resolved that the Solid City Board of Commissioners and all other citizens thereby express appreciation to Joseph Lee Smith for a job well done and wish him well in his future endeavors. Congratulations. There's one thing that I've noticed, and you guys probably heard it too, he just didn't go to work. Each level he sailed to become something different, and that is to be commendable. Thank you, sir. But of all of us.
Twenty-eight, eleven months, right? Twenty-seven and eleven years.
Twenty-seven and eleven months. All right. Mr. Tony R. Lackey. Whereas Tony R. Lackey was hired on September, on street maintenance worker for Solid City Street Maintenance December Department on September ninth, two thousand and five, whereas Tony R. Lackey became a line maintenance technician for the Solid City Public Works Department on June fourth, twenty twelve, and whereas Tony Lackey became distribution and collection systems supervisor for Solid City Public Works Department on July twenty-four, twenty seventeen, and whereas Tony R. Lackey became utility maintenance worker for Solid City Public Works Department on April thirtieth, twenty eighteen, and whereas Tony R. Lackey became utility location technician for Solid City Public Works Department on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and whereas his dedicated interest and devotion to duty has been valuable to inefficiency to the town of Solid City, whereas he has reached the age of retirement and desires to devote his efforts and energies in other areas. Now, whereas it be let it be resolved that Solid City Board of Commissioners and all of its citizens do but hereby express appreciation to Tony R. Lackey for a job well done and wish him well in his future endeavors. You did an excellent job, you did exactly what, uh, Mr. Smith did. You guys came in and you advanced yourself every step of the way right up into retirement because you just got a promotion in twenty twenty-two. So now you leave.
Thank you very much. You?
Yes, I'm sorry, you guys, we need to come back. I, I just
Well, Joey. Call you Joey. Thank you once again for all the hard dedication, work you put in here to count Solid City more potential despite for your twenty-seven years of evermore service, and thank you once again for all you've done for us and hit your phone on go meet. I won't say the same thing, it's been a pleasure working with you over almost a year and a half, learned a lot from you. I know where the north, south, east, west go, you lead, and it's been a pleasure working with you. I want to thank you for this fact for your eighteen years of daycare service, public works, and to the department.
And that is a question. Madam clerk, do we have anyone for public comments? First up, we will have Mr. Don Kilgore, Kelly, Kelly. Uh, would you come forward and state your name and address?
Uh, good evening, my name is Donald Kelly, I'm here as a member of the board and on behalf of Innovate Chatham, which is a registered five oh one C three, uh, in the state of North Carolina, uh, with a mission of promoting technology development and use in Chatham County. I'm pleased to have, uh, my colleagues, the president, Bernie Wearing of the, uh, of the Innovate Chatham, uh, Jesse Bradley, uh, director of Right Here, Right Now Project, uh, I regret that some of our other members can't come. One of the members of the board that I'm sure you may know is Ty Cauton, uh, the Chatham Community and Schools, Chatham County. In twenty days, the twenty-second of January, the North Carolina Department of Information Technology is accepting applications for digital equity championship grants. These will be funded, uh, by the state, and among other criteria for, uh, the grants to qualify, uh, to receive funds is that they provide increased access and use of broadbanded, uh, internet services in the community. Uh, Innovate Chatham has a project that we're developing, uh, that we are calling the Chatham Connection to provide, uh, free Wi-Fi uh, in the county at select locations, and we would like to propose to the town, uh, that you consider, uh, collaborating with us in, uh, placing, uh, free Wi-Fi for public access in the six parks in, inside of the city. By free, we mean that the project develops, uh, sorry, the project adopts all of the costs for the service. To run the service, all of the costs for the service, uh, to use the service are free for a period of three years. I guess what we call the cost of installation at the parks, the use of any, uh, permits or ins- uh, inspection fees at the town like levy, um, and internet access for the users, uh, and, uh, for system maintenance. Uh, the proposed model that we have is familiar to anybody that's checked into a McDonald's or a shopping mall and logged into their free public Wi-Fi there. So, um, we have, uh, started talking to local, uh, providers, uh, for, uh, access. We proposed putting in a one gigabit per second service for, with a three hundred megabit per second speed above. Full disclosure, we don't have any funds yet. The funds have not been allocated. Uh, that would come after the twenty-second, uh, when the project is approved. Uh, we look forward to working with the town. We hope this is a project of interest to you. Uh, I understand that my time is short. I have four seconds left on my stopwatch. And I am free to talk to anyone afterwards, uh, and hope that you have interest. We've met, uh, just before Christmas, Christmas with the mayor. I left my card with the town, uh, clerk, and we look forward to working. Thank you very much.
I, I have asked him to come back at the next meeting with a prepared presentation. Uh, we will talk, uh, amongst ourselves again because I think this is a valuable tool for our children. Uh, there's so many underprivileged individuals that do not have access. We experienced that during COVID, and I was just talking to the commissioner also about the bus that went around different parts of the town for an hour at a time, just so kids could get their homework out. So if we can make this work, this will be great for our young people and our people. So thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for, all for your consideration.
Next, we have Ms. Cindy Dameron. That's your name and address, please, ma'am.
Cindy Dameron, uh, one one oh eight oh U S Highway sixty-four West, Silver City. Um, I'm gonna be brief, I just, I looked at, um, the agenda tonight and saw a new business was uh, compensation and pay studies and contracts, um, for the employees. It worries me that we haven't gotten all our audits done. Um, and here we are wanting to spend more money when we don't know what we have to spend. And our fiscal year for the town runs July to June, and that should have been addressed at that time, not in the middle of the year. And if you have contracts with people, they're only good if you honor them. And if you have contracts for one year or two years, three years, you don't renegotiate in the middle of the contract. So I just wanted to tell you guys, I'm real concerned about that. I don't know how these figures will address our budget. And will you have to go back and redo the whole budget if you're gonna be doing things like that? So it seems to me like the appropriate time to address this is during budget meetings, not now. Thank you.
And thank you for your concern. Next, we have Reshan. Rich, oh, is that Rich, Richard McLean? Uh, were you wanting to do public comment, sir?
Well, I'll just go on before, uh, I've got a little, um, heavy hat.
Uh, motion goes public comment session.
Our motion to close the public comment session.
So, we're moving properly second, uh, in question, in favor, signify by a sign of aye. Uh, all opposed have the same right. Motion carries.
Good evening, um, this is public hearing for, um, R. twenty-three dash eleven oh one for George Street. The owner of the property is a doubtful applicant. The applicant is a doubtful Janus. They're requesting to conditionally rezone a parcel from residential twenty to office institutional conditional. The property is located at four thirty-one North Street and is approximately two point two zero acres. On November thirteenth, um, twenty twenty-three, the planning board did recommend denial of this rezoning. They found that the rezoning was inconsistent, um, with the surrounding area. Next slide. The subject property is located to the south of George Street and to the west of Riley Street. According to the zoning map, the area is currently zoned as R. twenty to the north and to the west, as well as the subject property, to the south and to the east of property zone R. ten. Next. The land use map, um, shows that this area would be best developed as low-density residential. Low-density residential is defined of as areas of residential development, typically single-family structures with minimum lot sizes of approximately a half an acre or larger. Next. When the applicant originally came into the planning department, he applied for a zoning permit to construct a single-family home, um, and that was in April of twenty twenty-three. He, in September, he came in to request a permit for a pavilion. Upon site inspection, the planning department noticed that there was no, um, primary structure since a pavilion is considered an accessory structure, you need to have a primary structure in order to have the accessory structure. With no primary structure, um, constructed on the site, um, the department did turn down, um, that application. But the, um, department did notice that the applicant had approximately fourteen minibus vehicles parked on the site. Um, this is considered to be used as a public, as a commercial parking lot for his business that he runs, um, which is not allowed in that zoning district. So a code enforcement letter was sent out to the applicant, and hence we are at this point right now trying to get a rezon um, to allow commercial development. Next slide. As you can see on the screen, um, the site is primarily, um, undeveloped. However, he has done some clearing of the area, and the next slide will show, um, the development that he has done on the property. You see a large, um, parking pad installed, um, with, that holds the fourteen, the approximate fourteen minibus, um, minibus parking currently. The rest of the property, you can see in the bottom corner, is undeveloped. Next slide. This is a view of how the property looks once you turn off of George Street. Um, the applicant did state that he intends to run the business out of this, um, out of this site and has intentions to expand the business as well. Next slide. George Street is primarily a residential street. Across the street is a vacant property. Um, to the west is a single-family residential, and as you can see from the bottom view, um, George Street is a paved roadway. However, the roadway is approximately twelve to thirteen feet wide. This is considered a substandard roadway, and in order for, um, two cars to pass at the same time on this road, um, one car has to veer off as well as the other car a little bit, um, in order for both vehicles to tra- um, travel on the same line. Next slide. Um, your options tonight are to approve the map amendment to, um, office institutional conditional as presented and find the rerunning as inconsistent with the Silver City Land Development Plans, but amend the land development plan to mixed use, deny the rezoning request as inconsistent with the surrounding area and the Silver City Land Development Plan, or table the, table the item to a date cert. Their staff's presentation, um, are there any questions of staff at this time?
Mayor, we need to open the public hearing.
Okay, we have a, uh, we want to open a public hearing, uh, consider the public hearing open for public comments. There is one name on the list, I believe. It said, uh, I'm assuming the last name is Ryan. Is that correct?
Did anyone sign up for, to speak of this? Is this the one?
This is the one you signed up for? Uh, you don't bother, sir, and state your name and address.
I just come up with an awful behalf, um, I noticed she said, um, that the road wasn't big enough for two cars, but I've been living up there for, um, about thirteen years, and we have no problem getting up and down. It's a dead-end road. And most times, if only cars that come up through there, maybe city, um, vehicles that, um, don't, that, um, picks up stuff on the, on the side of the road or come up through there, but it's dead end and, um, I haven't seen a police officer up through there in two or three years. And it, and it's, it's supposed to be considered as private road, but it's still considered a city, city property in terms of, right? But the only, the only, like I said, I haven't seen a police officer come up down in two or three years. And I stay up, and, and my, my neighbor David, me and him, the only two that really comes up and down that road. Because we don't have two, uh, houses on the other end. And I don't understand why so much focus on George Street when it's a dead-end road, and we, we don't see many cars coming up and down that road. And, and I noticed she said that, um, you can see his, um, business from the road. You can't even see the business till you come up the road. You had to come up the road in, in order to see his business or his, or his parking lot that he put out there. Because it's, it's two houses down the hill there. I don't know who's complaining about the road, coming up and down the road, but we all never seen cars coming up and down that road. So it's, I mean, somebody said a lot of people complained about that road. But I don't know who would be complaining about that road because we never had a problem. I never had a problem with Alco David. We never had a problem with Alco coming up down that road, but we all, we, we meet them coming up sometime, but we can get by fine. So I don't know exactly what the problem is with, with the parking lot or with, or with his, um, parking vans out there. And like I said, it's a dead-end street, dead-end road. You have to go and turn around and come back down and get out.
Okay.
You would think if the road was that important, if the road was that important, you'd see police officers coming up and down there checking on it every once in a while. We never see police officers coming up and down through there.
Sir, that's all I have.
If I can ask you a question, how does your neighbor feel on the south side of that property? I remember talking to her and you as well. I remember talking to you. Mention this particular, particular situation. Neighbor on the south side of the property, I forget her name, did she feel about the same way you do? Out of curiosity.
On the south side?
Yeah, like we're coming up George Street before his property on the left.
She ain't never there. She comes, she comes maybe once every two or three months and stays one night and gone. So she's never at home. She, she, the only reason she comes in because she got a older, her mother, her mother passed. That's why she bought the house. Her mother passed. And after her mother passed, she got another, her mother's sister still on her family. And they comes there maybe once every two or three months and stay one night and they gone. But she don't have a problem. She, she told me she didn't have a problem with that on that street.
Thank you.
Yeah, I remember, I remember talking to you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Well, let me start here then. One of the things I think that has happened is the applicant did not do what he stated he was going to do from the beginning. When it was first, and when he first came to the planning department to get his zoning request or get his applications, and then they go out and there's no housing. And it was actually stated that he was going to build a home. So that's one issue right there, the sound house being built there, and that was a requirement.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Is anybody else signed up to speak?
No.
Then we need to close the public hearing before we have discussion.
All right. They moved the public hearing, uh, public hearing being closed. I would in favor say aye. All the opposed have the same right. So back to where I was at. So that is part of the issue, and we have seemingly quite a bit of people not following the process. And that's just my little two cents worth in it, because there are, there is a process that you follow. And he did ask that for a home to be built along with a couple of other items that are here. I think it's a five thousand-foot pad, which would have set up red flags anyway for a single-family home. So I'd like to hear from the rest of the commissioners.
I agree with you, and from what I read, from the video, it was gonna be like two, two vehicles. Two, many more than vehicles. Now, now we're looking at ten and fifteen commercial vehicles.
So when I rode up there, it is a tight fit. So my, what my concern would be, if it is, if it's commercial, you have the fif, the passenger vans, and then you have the minibuses. So that's going to cause some problems with coming in and out if anybody's coming into the road, because the, the road is really, technically, I would see it as a one-car road. Even though you say you can get in and out, it is, it is tight. It, it is, is, is real tight when you go up. And then, again, following in with what you all are saying, he had planned on doing a house, but then there's a, a parking lot that's there and all these vans and the minibus, minibuses that I saw yesterday. And then there's a tent that's a, that's out there with some hammocks under it. So what, what is really the purpose? Is it, is it for a home or is it for a business to be in the residential setting? Because it is a residential setting, and he, he did business stuff before even going through the process. So.
I guess question, is it in a quartet to how wide the road could be?
Did you repeat the question?
It's in a quartet for a road, how wide road could be?
For the zoning district or in general?
Yeah, for a, a two-lane road.
For a two-lane road, I believe the, the standard width is, I believe, eight feet in each direction, so a total of at least sixteen, between sixteen and seventeen feet to accommodate two cars passing at once.
Well, would you say that's a two-lane road?
No.
Anyone else? Alex?
Who maintains, excuse me, who maintains that road? Does the town maintain the road or the citizens?
It's the town maintain.
Commissioner Patterson, Commissioner House?
Good question. Can we ask the applicant? Or does anyone know, like, what is the status of the house? Or is there a house being built? Is your plan?
Already closed, but yeah, we closed.
Yeah, it said on here that proposed completion date was the eighth of this month. And the house hasn't even begun to be built. Was the, was the house just one of the three things being put on there? I mean, is this contingent, this agreement contingent on the home being there at all?
The house has to be.
The house has to be there.
Because that's what it was originally, uh, that was the original request.
This will be the resolved, so that the question, sorry. This, this application is asking to rezon so that he does not have to build a house? And it would be for commercial, for the use of the parking lot? Would be a part of the reserve in compliance. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. I mean, if, if he rezon, he would not have to build a house.
What is the place of the board?
I make a motion to give the approval to propose a zoning map amendment from residential twenty, the office institutional conditional. I find the amendment is not consistent with the county solid city land development plan based on staff report, supporting exhibits, the consistency statement, and testimony provided. I also find the amendment is not reasonable and is not in harmony with the surrounding area.
I'll say.
They moved a property second. All those in favor of the denial, shame my sign of eye. Although the bottom have the same right, mostly carried. We're now down to the new business. They're killing old business, old business, okay, old business.
We have no old business, and our only item of new business has been pulled, so next item will be.
And managers report.
I'll be brief. Welcome everybody back from Christmas vacation. Happy New Year to everybody. It's good to see everybody again after a break from the holidays. Just a couple of things to make the board aware of. We've received all the meters we need to have installation for, for our metering project. So we have the last of the poles that have to be installed that allows the meters to be able to talk to each other. Once that's completed, hopefully by the middle of this month, we'll be deploying the new meters throughout the residential community of Salar City, getting that process kicked underway for residential water and sewer meter project. The FY twenty-one audit has been formally completed. We had, it's last month, our auditor presented, it's been formally accepted by the LGC, so it is closed out. The twenty-two audit is now underway officially now that you have approved the contract with Sharp Patel, to begin that with the consent agenda tonight. Our reconciliation work is, is deep underway. We have already completed all of the bank reconciliations for FY twenty-two. Do we expect that audit process to be much faster? We're, February twenty-three, so we're right where we want to be and getting this, getting this done. So I'm very pleased with the promise of us finance that.
And do we have any questions further down, Mayor? I do have a couple. Can you give us an update on the water and sewer project where we are?
With, with, there's several. Yes. So we, we've had, we've had one meeting with them that was very productive with their attorneys and, and staff. The, a lot of the crux of the conversation is trying to agree on the timeline and going over the, they, basically the deal breakers for both sides. And I thought that was a really productive first step in the process. Our next meeting is contingent upon sampling the transcripts, some language for us to review so that we, you know, we're just having conversation at this point, but until you put it on paper, you certainly don't have an agreement. So right now, it's just been conversation. We don't have an agreed-upon timeline of any type of implementation. We did discuss some dates, but not anything that I'm ready to disclose at this point. But it was a very productive conversation, I'll say that.
Do we have any information on the rules speed and where they are in their process, their construction process?
Construction process. I, I don't want to speak the rules speed, but I don't have any updated.
Anyone else?
That's a question on the meters. What's the thing the meters in, are deals going up or inconsistent?
Well, the meters don't have anything directly to do with the billing, because the, the billing is entirely based on the rates that have already been adopted as part of your fee schedule. The meters actually allow us to have a more accurate reading of, of how much usage is actually taking place. So if there's a change in somebody's bill, then that's because the reading is more accurate than the meter that was in previously. And, and that may happen. Typically, most meters degrade about one percent every year that they're out in service. That's pretty much the, what's said is best practices that you'll see. A consequence of that is, you have really old meters, you actually underbill. And you find that you're generating, the what now?
Underbill.
Underbill, which means people shouldn't be paying more than they are, because it's under-reading the amount of water they're actually using. So you're not changing the rate, but it may be, maybe they use two, twenty-four hundred gallons, but it's only reading they use two thousand. The new meter may come in and accurately show it a hundred percent accuracy what they're using, and that's going to vary from property to property. Each meter is going to be in a different state of condition. So one meter may be reading at ninety-six percent currently. You may have one that's reading at eighty-seven percent. So it's, that's the consequence of having really old meters and it being a long time before they've been replaced. But that's a, that's a case-by-case basis. But I, what, what we know from the manufacturer of the meters is that if anything, you may see the bill amount be higher because what was read previously was an underbilling of the amount of water being used. But we're not talking about dramatic changes in the business. I mean, that's just property by property, what the condition of that previous meter is.
How many meters is it to be changed, these old analog types?
Oh, they're, they're not, well, some are analog, some are what you call radio read, where you typically ride by the property and a handheld device reads it, being in proximity riding down the street. This would be a AMI process, so it's, it's basically a satellite read. So by having essentially a few poles scattered throughout the town, all that information is fed into those poles and ultimately back to Town Hall. So we can read in real time the amount of water that each residential property would be using. So we have even more accurate data to go by four building than we have before, and we have real-time data instead of monthly data.
And you don't have to pay someone to drive around. We, to be a close proximity to the meters to read them too, you save money that way.
The review process, you would not have to. Now, you still would have to go through the process of reading commercial meters. Some of those have to be manually read, some of those are already going to read. There's some variation there, but this will address things from a presidential process. For, for additional amount that we can discuss at a future point, the meters also come with the ability to be able to remotely cut meters on and off. So something that's an option is when we have new properties being developed, that can be a requirement if we wanted it to be for new properties or new customers to purchase that, that application so that we have a remote ability to do that. Or if we have a property that we've had to unfortunately disconnect on repeated occasions for not paying the bill, we would have that option to be able to remotely do that. So it could reduce staff time and, and the meter reading process and improve accuracy.
What's the price point on that compared to the radio?
I can't tell you what the radio reads would cost today, if we had to price that again.
What's it cost now for the new one, for the meter?
That was financed by the town, I believe it was three point four million. That's what we did, and we paid for half of that upfront with the money that the town received in the second tranche of the American Rescue Plan money.
How many meters was that, though?
How many meters was that?
For three point four million?
Twenty-six hundred, what is it right now?
Twenty seven.
Three thousand, somewhere around three thousand.
I mean, I, I mean, ideally, in a best, best-case scenario, you'd have it in your replacement schedule, and you'd be replacing about ten percent of your meters annually. That's easier said than done. And what typically happens is you have budget issues, things you're trying to address, and you end up getting further and further behind on that replacement schedule. And you reach the point we are now, where you have fifteen-year-plus meters that are less effective or ineffective. And we're going from a, a daily technology to the best technology. So the consequence of, of that is customers are going to receive a good product. And, and also they can have the ability to know what their usage is in real time instead of waiting for their, they would have to.
They'll be able to see that on the website?
There's, there'll be a platform to do that.
That'd be cool, where they can adjust through the month that they need it.
We didn't think we'd see some progress made on the two buildings. Well, it was great, but I'm down and boarded up.
Lost your downtowns. I know Jack is working with Mr. Fallen's work, so I know there's some progress being made, seeing this.
Is there a holdup? I mean, is there a certain thing that's, that's keeping it from going forward?
I don't know the details of that. He, he's, taste always, in the last month, there's been progress made behind the scenes on that, but I don't have any specifics to share.
Because I thought, well, one time, in a while, maybe a year or so back, they were someone who, they owned for the beauty shop was, was going to fix it and tear it down, was doing some work, and then all of a sudden just stopped.
I don't know why. I'm saying Jack, Jack is involved in that process. He could speak to that.
Okay. Well, you may ask him to shoot everybody an email or whatever.
I'd be happy to.
Because I'm not the only person that's interested, that I've had people ask me about it.
I want to update on the Carter building.
The Carter building? It's, it's, I got an email from Taylor Hobbs today. It's just a matter of when the board is ready to take action on that. So if the board was ready to move forward, I can bring something back for next board meeting, if y'all ready to move.
Did you go there? Did you really go through the architectural preliminary planning for that? Like, what's it going to look like inside, finishes, costs, fundamental things like that, or?
That's what we've had our architect already drawn up.
Would we be approving that? Is that, is that what you're discussing here?
Yes, that's what that would be.
So you do have it?
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns?
Well, we have, well, we have, we have sketches at architectural level. We don't have any future design work or any of that kind of stuff. But we at the basic level, we have architectural designs. I mean, is the board, is the is the wishes of the board when I read that back at the next meeting? Okay.
I have a question if uh if I'm out of order, please let me know. Does the town manager get involved at all um with homeowners? Association, group complaints or ordinance enforcement, things like that?
Typically not. I mean, uh, obviously, if anything is not able to be resolved at the department level, that would always be something that I can get involved in. But I've never had an issue with an HOA brought directly to me.
Okay.
But typically, that would be handled in the uh community development department if it's a code enforcement violation.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I want to thank their manager for taking the time out of their busy schedule to come out tonight. Um, we thank those that had public comments and concerns. And we are aware of some of the concerns that you have, and we will be addressing those. The motion, um, we go into closed session.
Motion going to closed session?
Can you identify the?
Okay, our numbers.
In the margin, oh, uh, general statute, one, four, three, dash, three, one, eight, dot, eleven, A six.
It's been moved here every second. Uh, all the papers, let it be known by sign of eye. All of them said the same, right? When they got approved back in April, when this process actually started. So the board has decided uh come together with consensus to let those three move forward. Under uh Jack's supervision, uh, because he is for me.
I wish the board would have had a discussion with me about that, because that's not part of the thing.
Why is it not possible?
The because it is subject to the U D O anytime you accept the applications. We haven't accepted applications. We've all we've done is a rezoning. That's it.
We've done a rezoning, and what else did we do?
That's it. And we have not accepted applications for housing. If we were, then they would be subject to the U D O. We have not. I mean, for the express purpose that we would have to put them under the U D O. But it would it wouldn't benefit us in any way to accept it, and it would really be detrimental. Um, you you had spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in studying. Um, doing doing a comprehensive land management, setting out the process to now do a U D O. Having Freeze and Nichols assess, uh, look at system development fees. And if you were to accept the applications now, then you would mean all those developments would be circumventing all of that. And we grandfathered in circumventing all of that, and you would have wasted all that money.
Not if we put a moratorium on anything that came behind it.
I'm not I'm not following.
They think we we're just talking about these three developments and moving them forward.
You don't have the sewer to give them.
Nothing has to sewer. That that what is actually being asked for is allowing them to do their uh continue to do their planning. Now, I think this was bought up before I ever came to the board sometime back. And Curtis asked the question, Commissioner Brown asked the question, could we go ahead and put pipe in the ground even though we didn't have the water and sewer? And the answer was yes. So you're you're what you're what we're doing is trying to allow these. These people to move forward, and we're moving forward, they're moving forward also. But now I didn't understand, you may have some concerns about uh what this is going to look like. But when you're dealing with a relatable uh con pressure. And then we can pretty much take it to base value, especially if the average ice is three hundred twenty five thousand dollars, but then I don't put up junk. They're going to follow closely to what we we want in a develop.
Sanford denied those same houses because they said they were so bad they weren't allowed.
Really?
Yes.
They were so what?
They wouldn't accept their houses.
Because why?
Because of the quality of their houses.
Which development was this? Was this the one there?
This would be up by uh sixty four, yeah, thirty two.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Was that was that due to construction?
Yeah, what was that due to?
I I can't answer that.
Reputation? What are they? Had they made?
I mean, D R Horton is the largest home builder in the country. Uh, I I think it was. The homes, they are several lines of houses, and the line of houses that they plan to build is the same line. That they want to build here, which is the express line, which is their lowest, the lowest end houses that they built. Um, and I think that was part of the reasoning behind um why Sanford denied it, was they felt the. The construction quality wasn't up to par for what they wanted to allow in their community. So when you're talking about updating the U D O. If most towns update their U D O every ten years or so, that's the best practice. Solid City's U D O goes back to the early nineties. It's it's thirty.
Well, there was a, just to be accurate, Greg, it was ninety three, but. But about, some of you will remember the U D O committee.
Yes.
Yeah, from a few years ago, that and that resulted in extensive revisions to it. So it's not literally the ninety three document, which is always remanded to get all the time. But there was at least that one extensive.
That's true.
Deep dive on, you know, and a whole lot of it was changed. And then again, when G S sixty D came in, you know. When uh when G S one sixty D became operational, uh, the state, the the new. So statute, uh, the new article, all the planning stuff was put in, there's always stuff that we did a, there was another. Barely extensive redo of the U D O, but I love the bones of it. Yeah, they're from ninety three.
Does does anyone know who built the houses at um across, what's the name? How many hills?
No.
We've seen, I remember.
Uh, uh, we can find out, but that's.
Because that's kind of what we don't want.
That's what that's exactly what you get.
Which houses are you referring to?
They're just jammed.
Yeah.
Do you think those houses are subpar or too cheap or?
Which house?
From C KU on sixty four, is what she was referring to.
I'm up. Army Hills. Humpty Hills. Yeah, absolutely.
I said, what's what's going on with the houses? What?
I always heard, I always heard them called track houses, because they had like a thirty year lifespan.
That's that's the correct statement. Um, I mean, there's a lot of problems with Army Hills. The sad part is it's probably the newest neighborhood and the worst design neighborhood in Silver City.
Well, that comes with the fact streets are not wide enough, sidewalks were not put in. Uh, I don't think anybody is going to uh pretty much.
But that's exactly what the U D O addresses.
What else? Does does it address the 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 standards of the homes? That's more like code.
Yeah.
Residential code and whatnot. Does it, does U D O address anything like that, Hank? Besides width of streets and sidewalks and?
To the extent that it can, because there are some things that you can't regulate because they are state building code, or there's a law that expressly prohibits.
So there's a town called Oak Ridge. They have an ordinance where all the houses have to have a certain composition of uh brick. That has serious trade offs for the cost of homes. So that is something that needs to be looked at, like. If you want quality homes, we also want people to afford them as well. You don't want to put a lot of red tape on things like that.
But I'll take this role, but the the more the higher the quality that builds a house, the more cost. And then on the other hand, we're talking about affordable affordable house.
It's gonna have vinyl siding, it's gonna have three tab shingles, it's gonna be built on a slab instead of a crossface foundation.
You gotta think of it this way. If if a house a house today, and it's it's just the structural costs are, the house is approaching. They're they're cutting tremendous corners because that's the cost of construction for a new house today to rebuild. And and it would concern me to see anything less than that. The the flip side of that is, and I know it's a it's a difficult laundry that viewers of board put in where people want quality housing, people also want affordable housing. What's the what's the balance there? The cost, the challenge of that is is the cheaper we make the housing, though, the greater the tax burden you're passing on to all of the existing residents of Silver City. The higher those, the more costly those new houses are, the less of a burden you're placing on the existing residents of Silver City. If you're building more cheaper houses, that's actually costing your existing residents more. So the best thing is for the new construction to be more costly.
You're suggesting the tax revenues yielded on cheaper houses, like they won't pay for services needed for for those homes to be constructed? Is that is that what you mean by that?
I I'm saying that the new constructed houses, because they're valued more, would be paying more in property taxes. Which reduces the burden on the other residents in town.
Yeah. And I'll pour it there. So I begin going back first where is the happy medium here? Because over on uh of sixty four. I wish I knew the name of the street, running from Chatham's Gym. The town allowed about fourteen homes to be built on less than two acres. So that references still, we're we're still talking affordable housing. Yes, and we did not hold habitat to all of these rooms.
Right.
But because when you look at it, there's, when I can look out and there's the next house.
Right.
So, uh.
But what's affordable by definition and what's affordable in practical terms to someone in Silver City are not the same. Because a four hundred thousand dollar house would still barely fall under the requirements of affordable housing in our metropolitan area.
What is it? What is that baseline?
What's that baseline?
Yeah, no, what what what's the affordability based on? Is it median salary?
It's based on the median household income of the area that you were. Here, how they study it, and our area is Chatham and Orange County.
So we're already skewed because of Pittsburgh, Chapel Hill.
And Orange County.
But that's the definition that's applied for. That's why I'm saying.
That's why it's persistent so far.
Exactly. That's why we, but at the same time, we have to be realistic. We know that's not true.
What I'm afraid of, and we see this happening in small towns, and it happens a lot like in the coast, is you have all these houses come in that's so so expensive. That it pushes the residents out because they can't afford to live.
Yeah.
And 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 I and that's not what I want to see because I grew up here with you. Maybe not right now, but anyway, so.
But the solution to that is in your U D O, you have it written so that it promotes diverse housing. Because everyone can't afford that four hundred thousand dollar home, but you want apartments, you want condos, you want townhomes that may be at a price point that people can afford. So they have a a variety of choices that still quality, but within their price range.
Well, how long would it take to have a new U D O?
So we talked about that, and I answered that question in two parts. The short answer to that is probably a year. The other, the second part of that is it can be broken up in parts, and the most critical pieces can be adopted as we go there, so it's not that length of time.
So so how does this, how does it affect um the businesses that are that's coming? That's that their plans are to be finished before, you know, if their if their plans are finished before. Uh, the housing is ready, then we're, you know.
Yeah, I want to change your question. Which bus, which businesses are we talking?
Well, I'm just talking about like like will speed. Yeah, and so I guess, and then even thinking about from the the great, the battery company up here. If they're, um, we, we don't want them moving somewhere else and not here.
Yeah.
So will we be in a position for them to have places to live here in town? So that, you know, that's that's a concern.
I I don't think either way, and you go, you're gonna make a difference in that timeline. Because you have to have sewer to grant them, and we are still under the S O C. That limits us at three hundred and twenty five thousand gallons, and that is all committed to full speed at this point. And when we get out of the S O C, that's not, you know, that's at the discretion of the state, but that's not going to be until after the West Water Plant upgrade is completed. So so my concern, I mean, so my concern is if we start taking applications for houses, then we're grandfathering them under old rules. But all of the process that of the legwork that we got to do could be completed before it would make any difference. Because just because we get a merger agreement completed with Sanford, and just because we've completed the requirements of the S O C. There's still this metal line between Sanford and Silver City. We're not going to flip a switch and just say, all right, we're in Sanford Sewer Dale. You got to install all that. That's twenty miles of a sewer line, and water line's just got to be installed. That's going to shake a ball.
Well, we had the uh on the gamble of the contractor. If he's willing to take that gamble, we have some apartments right down here behind the hospital mound that's sitting empty.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons I they buy out of money, now they grassed it gone through, but we took that gamble. And the contractor took that gamble. And so unless something happens very soon. That'll be a waste land. So what what we're saying, Silver City has had this reputation of not being business friendly. And as far as I'm concerned, we really need to change that. At least have the conversations with the individuals that this concern. But when you won't even take their calls, then you won't even talk to them. That's not saying much for us.
Who are we not returning calls to?
Uh, well, you you, I I meant, we got your last urging to meet with you.
On what?
About the situation.
On what's your last last Thursday?
You were in the office because I left the message with Kimberly. Oh, it was Wednesday, whatever day it was that I came and left the message, you never called me back. And it was based on a meeting that D R Horton wanted to have, just a conversation. So our thing is. We have to do better at what we're doing.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just that simple. We 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 cannot uh just keep putting people out. There's a lot of money that's being spent. And all of these things are interconnected, you know that. Everything that that is out there right now, it's interconnected to each other. And all I'm saying is just have the conversation.
We are, we talk to them constantly. I mean, to say we're not having conversations, we we probably talk to the D R Horton folks at least weekly. They call constantly. I mean, it's a it's a our regular conversation, always built with the Serenity Estates votes. Uh, it's it's Lee Lambert who's here with his property. I mean, they they stop by the office every week. So we're having a conversation with them. Now, if they get, if they don't get the answer they want to hear, that's not the same thing as saying you're not having conversations with them. But we're constantly talking to them. They constantly talk to Cal, to Chris, to Jennifer, to myself.
Well, yeah, Chris, that group can't, they can't make a decision. That that, you know, the decisions are right here. This is where the decisions are made here.
But you're asking them to make decisions about how sewer is going to get allocated.
Excuse me?
You you are asking them to make decisions because it affects how sewer is allocated.
Asking who to make decision?
Chris and Cal.
No, I'm not asking them to make that decision because they're not, this conversation is about. But well, you know.
Had it not been in the past, Curtis, you you probably, like, when something come before us. And they wanted it approved, we would have stipulations. They had to put in so much barriers, they had to have so. and they wanted it approved, we would have stipulations. They had to put in so much barriers, they had to have so much, much room for playgrounds and all that. Do you remember? Could something like that not be, when they? I don't understand the whole process, of course, but when they provide that, when we not come back and say, no, you have to do this, 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 and this.
That's the whole purpose of the U D O.
But, but we've done that. Do you remember?
Depends on what kind of permit it is.
Right.
Big subdivisions, you know.
We have a play with the mobile home part. What one, that one of them that we said they had to have so much of a area or, um?
Yeah, I think that would like the, what we call an R six district. And, and it's split back, and all that's different than a city built house.
So we couldn't do anything like that if on the stick built houses, like say you have to have.
That's what we wanted to do. That's exactly.
But I mean, so that these projects can go, start going forward, could we not do that?
The projects can't go forward. I mean, that's what I'm saying is, even if we approve it and grandfather them in, they can't go forward because they don't have sewer. So we'd be, we're just handicapping ourselves.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, can y'all write me with the timeline of these three major housing developments and then Wolf Speed? Who's first? Is this a first in, first out basis?
It's, it's entirely after the town decides.
And has that already been decided?
Other than, other than, we have a contract with Wolf Speed that tells them we have to meet certain sewer requirements for them. So.
So we kinda shot ourselves in the foot regarding that, if we also simultaneously promised investors beforehand?
Promised investors beforehand.
So the timeline is that the housing is after Wolf Speed?
Right.
Didn't, didn't we have to allocate so much, not to Wolf Speed, they, they weren't even in existence at that time? Didn't we have to allocate so much so it would be called a inside or mega size?
That's correct.
That was the million per day, right?
Yeah, that, that.
I mean, that didn't have nothing to do.
Provided by the Golden Foundation, right? This is the funds for the.
You asked a question about that building. I think that building was under a moratorium. He wanted to go in there, redo it, you know, before it was. Before it was a drugstore, and he wanted to put in several bathrooms and have a, a restaurant type thing, was my understanding. When you get the email from Jack, I think you'll find out that it was caused by under a moratorium.
I'm not sure what it.
It was some, I don't know if you call it change of views, but anyway.
Change of views.
He was gonna have to have more sewer. And he can't get it.
It seems like we ought to at least have him claim the place up. If Silver City, if you're visiting, they go.
Yeah, in my opinion, you go in there, right? But I think he wanted to do it all at one time, but since we're under a moratorium, Jack can explain it better than I can.
Well, I, I was looking for a way to do, do things at the same time. All right, to help projects move forward, uh, rather than be sad. So, see, uh, Mr. Bray came up with the fact, if one's finished and the other is not, where are the employees going to live? It will not be here, we know that. And, and he came back, well, we won't have water and sewer at all. We won't have it by then for them anyway. My thing is, we ought to be able to work on several different projects at the same time.
I agree.
So, with that being said, I don't see, uh, they're drawn.
Tell them that they can't do that. That's different than saying we'll accept their application. They can draw whatever they want. But once we accept their application, I, I, let me try and use some dates first. If we said today we wanted to start a U D O, let's just assume it takes all of calendar year twenty-four to complete that. We, we continued to negotiate the merger agreement with Sanford, and we decided that we wanna enter into that, and we agreed to sometime around the end of the current fiscal year. And we agreed to implement that July one twenty-five. The, the, the state is not gonna lift the S O C until at least that date of F Y, beginning of F Y twenty-five. You've completed your U D O though, and all of twenty-four. Until that S O C, and then even when the state lifts that S O C, then you still only have a very small amount of sewer that you, is not enough to approve those three projects you've already named, the Serenity Estates, the Fox Haven, et cetera. It's not enough. It's, it's enough for phase one of one of those. And then even after that, nothing has been done to address the twenty mile stretch of pipe that's gonna be needed to create the sewer. So, all, all I'm, all I'm trying to propose is, I don't see, and I'm, I'm trying to help you, I'm trying to help the town. I don't see where the town gains anything by accepting applications when you can have all the updated work completed before it would ever make any difference when it comes to being able to allocate sewer. But if you approve it now, you're not gonna be any further along down the road to be able to build houses at all because they can't get it approved by the county and for inspections because they don't have sewer.
You're just creating a backlog.
You're just creating a backlog, but it's one that you can't go back at that point and, and get them to build it to standard. And, and I agree with what you're saying about building code, but your, your, your street widths, whether you want underground utilities, what your system development beats are, what your green spaces and what your expectation is, so stormwater retention pods. All, you're, you're based on the ninety-three code that may either don't address these issues, it's dressing them apart or in any places that U D O even contradict itself. Uh, so all I'm trying to propose is, let's, we're not trying to slow it down because we want the growth. If, if we had sewer today, I'd have a totally different approach. All I'm saying is, let's get the U D O right. That way you can have the development that you're gonna be happy with for the future. And you're gonna have the completed houses in the exact same timeframe that you would have had before. It's, it's gonna end up in the same place, but you get the quality housing that you want. You get the neighborhood design that you want. Instead of something that still looks like, um, Homewood Acres. I mean, excuse me, Harmony Hills.
Well, you don't have the ability. I, I know I'm belaboring the point. But there are certain stipulations that you could put on any developer before they laid the first anything. Based on what they have and place in front of you, you can, because even, okay, let's say everything is, is, is perfect, and they bring you the plans, and it's not needy uh, what this new U D O requires. You have to have them changing any. So, if I already know, which Ms. Mepke said, the average two-lane street is sixteen, what she says? Sixteen feet, if I already know this, then I make sure that this development has somewhere in that area. If I know that they need sidewalks on each side of the road, if I know they need adequate parking to car garage, and I'm ag with. If I already know these things that are needed, I can hold this company accountable because I'm telling them this is what they have to do to receive funding. And I don't see why that couldn't, uh, is not a way to get this done, rather than waiting, uh, it would be sixty months. But you said you could piecemeal it.
Yes.
So, that's the same thing I'm saying. It's exactly the same thing I'm saying. It, it just give them some, something to work with, because if you're gonna piecemeal it, you're not gonna have a complete U D O anyway.
Once they, once you accept their application, there's no more piecemealing. It's, it's what it is at that time, you accept that application.
Yeah, but you don't accept it without, without proving what you want.
Don't accept it without approval, which you want.
So, Mr. Mayor, are you, so saying like make it condition, make, make it.
I said, I'm not gonna approve this unless what's in it is what I want. Now, we, we would negotiate, contract negotiating, same thing. We didn't have what, read for that. And until the contract met both sides of approval, it was not signed, although you know. It's the same thing with these, with the contract. Until it meets our standard.
But I think Mayor, the standards, unless the U D O is adopted, what Hank's saying is if he takes the app, allows them to take the applications today, there are no stipulations. Because you're not doing a conditional zoning. This is whatever, and that any developer will come back and they'll say, huh, you gave us that application. They are going to do exactly what they want to do. Cause there's no stipulations. They're grandfathered by that current U D O. That's what Hank's trying to explain. There are none because you're not doing a conditional zoning. You're giving them an application and they're gonna hit the, hit the ground running and do whatever they want. They don't have to do the roads. You may want them to do them sixteen feet wide. They don't have to, and they only have to do what that U D O, our own wants.
If they don't sign the contract, they don't get to build. We're still talking contract negotiation.
But we can't make up rules for the, we have to go by what the state statute says and what our U D O does. We can't give, we can't do one thing for one contractor and not another. It has to be. So that's where we're going with this, and that's why it's so important for the U D O, the new one to be adopted. So we're not backtracking, we're moving forward with our infrastructure, because as we all know, we have some problems with roads and our infrastructure. So that's why it's so important. Excuse me for interrupting. So maybe in the planning, planning for a little while, it kind of.
Yeah. And you need your system development fee adopted in place as well. Because anything that you don't add on to that system development fee to that new house, you're passing, you're ultimately passing that cost on to everybody else in the town to cover that service. I'm saying the residents of town don't have extra funds to be paid for, for more services. That's, that's in effect what you'd be doing. Alright, so it's like every.
How can we see their U D O right now?
It's on the west side.
They're saying in a development, but you can get it wide enough where two cars can. Harmony Hills is there's not adequate parking in the driveway. So if you got more than one car, and when you get company on top of the bench, then you got both sides of the street blocked.
And, and they build, they build the driveways very near, or if you've got two cars back to back. The garages are built small, so people really don't usually put their car in, they're used to check the storage. And the roads are built so narrow, you can't park on the street, and an emergency vehicle get in that situation. And the town has had to get involved in that with Harmony Hills because we had an incident a few months ago where a fire truck could not get down the street to respond to an emergency incident because a car parked on the road. So, that, that, that's what I'm trying to protect you from, is another neighborhood being developed. We can't go back and correct Harmony Hills. It is what it is, but I hope it's a, it's a lesson learned how to move forward to recreate the same estate. And, and that's what I'm trying to keep the town from doing, is to make sure we get it right, because, you know, we can take applications today, but you know, how does this, how do you last a long? And I hate for a few months to make all the difference in a really quality construction we're happy with and to do for the next hundred years. Or something that's a Harmony Hills, that's, that's an eyesore and an albatross around their neck, the next generation. That, that we're having to get involved in and constantly have to deal with upset residents about. Cause there's a lot of angry people at Harmony Hills about the situation out there, and there is no solution.
Well, I mean, you, you know, that's, that's kinda like the guy that bought the house beside the niggas, like you bought the house, you ain't be angry. I mean, that's on you. You know, so if you're angry, you're just angry because you bought it. And, and so.
There are a couple houses out there. And there are a couple houses out at Harmony Hills where the sewer line is built under the house. Under the house.
The main sewer line.
That is an expect the problem. That came from the town itself, because that shouldn't have ever happened.
The town proved that.
They have been running sewer under a house.
They built the sewer, they built the house on top of the sewer line. You probably know that.
Is it just the one house I have?
I think it's a couple houses. I mean, it's, it sounds like a ridiculous example, but it's a real example, and this is a real example of our existing code.
Yeah, well, we won't believe it at a point, and I think we're gonna keep that pain down the road a long enough. But I agree, uh, going back to Jack and the moves. It shows because she is on the water, you know that. And, uh, and to get that help for a short period of time, and get her here to blow the water, would be beneficial to, to everybody.
I've had a conversation with them shortly before Christmas about opportunities to cooperate and work together. So that's, that's already been addressed, and we have a attempt that we've hired, we have been able to find a planner, but we've hired an attempt to be able to assist with a lot of the customers coming in the door that are slowing the planning nails.
So are they going to work together?
Are they going to work together? That's, that's the goal. I mean, we gotta identify exactly what that looks like. That's the goal.
How are we for, uh, an inspector for the town instead of relying on the county with all this stuff that's coming down the pipeline?
You, you don't wanna go down that road.
Why not?
It's, it, there's no position harder to find than a building inspector. And it would cost you probably a hundred thousand dollars to hire a building inspector, and.
A hundred thousand for that salary?
Yeah. And you wouldn't get them to stay. Al- almost all of your municipalities are getting out of the building inspection business, except you're really large communities. And that's almost entirely going to county service because it's so difficult to find people. If, if, if building inspectors were diamond dozen, that would be different, but it's, it's, it's probably the most in-demand position you can find. Because they have to pass the license, the state exams, and they have to serve under someone who has the next license to be able to advance. And it's, it's not.
It's like, uh, like a journeyman. I see. I didn't know that.
It's incredibly hard to affect.
So we had it before, then we don't have it. That, that, that person go to the county or?
Yeah.
Are we? Are we hard pressed for getting things done relying on the county? Or not? You foresee us being in a bind when all this stuff comes down the pipeline, we're like, hey, Chatham County, we need some help here, because we're gonna have a lot, whereas they have already vastly expanded their housing inventory. We're not there yet. We're gonna need them big time, so I just, I, I hope the resources be there.
They're committed to that, and part of, and it goes back to, um, having good codes and plans in place. When Wolf Speed was announced, part of the development agreement that they had with Wolf Speed was some of the fees that Wolf Speed has to pay the county covered the cost of building inspectors, and they, and they added building inspectors. There are two building inspectors that work for Chatham County that do nothing but Wolf Speed.
I'm sure it's massive.
Does anybody do a contract? Independent contract, independence, people?
Yes.
Have any experience with that?
I had experience with it, yes. Generally works out very poorly. That's my experience also. It's, it's typically kinda like what you had with coenforcement with a contract, but worse. You, you do the bare minimum. Because your problem is, when you have a building inspector that's traveling like that, you, you're getting the bare minimum work because they're trying to serve too many people.
After Charlie retired, we went through a couple of contractors. And the second one finally just took his hands and said, I'm not having a part of it. And that's been the board at that time decided.
Wanted to be sober.
Um, because I, I, I know, I don't know what the business was, but there were two or three of them that, um, he said he wasn't gonna be treated that way. Because they got upset with him because and all honestly, things that were passed in the past, in the past were not being passed by the contractor, and he wouldn't. And he wouldn't.
BN.
BN, that's a good word.
What was it? He's not supposed to.
Exactly.
That's just part of the process.
Yeah.
But it, it was so, um.
We got people don't like Jack, because he does his job.
Exactly.
It's not, he's, it's not, he's a bad employee. When he was in planning, he was, he was the best.
But this contractor, he was doing his job, and it became so burdensome. He said he could go anywhere and not deal with that, so. And then, so when we tried to look to hire someone full-time, because. Like with Chatham County, they had different levels of certifications in their staff. We had one person that we were fortunate enough to have all the certifications where we only needed one person. But the only people we could find was at that time, back in, what, five years ago at least. Was seventy-five thousand BN. And so that's why I say it would cost probably a hundred thousand or more to get the same certifications that Charlie had.
You, you couldn't chart, you wouldn't have enough inspections to do to recover your costs, when the county doesn't prove.
Back then, in my day.
Yeah.
We grew into our position.
Well, there's a good young man that retired.
That should be the standard.
That's not, that's not a position you can grow into.
So we started the process of the new U D O.
Yes, we're putting it up, yeah, putting it up the R Q, yes.
Oh, wait now?
Yes. We have to bring it back to you to approve. Help us create it. That's where we are, is, is receiving bids for that process, and we'll bring that back to you.
That's what we talked about the last meeting.
That's right.
Alright. So before we go, and this is probably not part of the meeting, but, um. We have two Martin Luther King programs that are coming up, um, and on the thirteenth. And, uh, fifteenth. Uh, last year, several of, um, actually the board came to the Martin Luther King Breakfast. On that Saturday, and, uh, the thirteenth, eight o'clock at. Holy Trinity United Holy Church up on Sears Street, Trinity Street, Trinity Street. Excuse me, Travis. Trinity Street, but if it's a fifteen dollars, you can pay for it at the door. Hopefully you can come. And then on Monday night at seven o'clock, Citizens in Action, oh, six o'clock, excuse me. Citizens in Action is having a Martin Luther King program at the same church. And the guest speaker is going to be Senator, uh, Madeline Murdock. So those are the two. We'd like to see our town officials participate.
Could you, could you pull down a last text, just so I won't forget?
Okay.
It was mentioned up near at a hearing.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, is we need to make a date. Um, I have a few dates in January, um, I would propose the eighth, tenth, eighteenth. Twenty-ninth and thirty-first, if any of us, oh, not the thirty.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, eighteenth, twenty-nine.
There's a, and their planning board meeting the eighth.
And we got a steering committee meeting.
Eighteen.
Eighteenth.
Okay, what, what, uh, uh.
Let me find the calendar.
Mission.
The ninth was for the steering committee meeting.
It's the ninth.
But we had heard of that.
Tuesday.
The.
Okay.
That committee for.
So what about the tenth?
What's happening?
It's up, that's up to you.
Steering committee.
It would be the board, um, myself and Kim, and, uh.
Oh.
Our, a couple attorneys representing us, and then Mount Air and their attorneys.
How many people are they going to bring?
We have, we have to notice it, because it'll be.
We'll have to notice the meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would.
What, what part do we play in it?
A part with what?
What do we play into that?
Here, the, the, so, the way the ordinance try is written, which is required by state laws. We had to pick an arbitrator, and arbitrator issued a ruling, and ruling was for the town. Which was directly appealable to the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
They can't go to court unless they have appealed to the appeal process, and you were the, you as the board are the next step in that process.
Okay.
So they're going to appeal what has been ruled to us?
Correct.
So Chris or Cal or somebody else have to be here?
Chris will be here, uh, David Honeycutt will be here with McGill. Yes, and it's, it's, it's an opportunity to listen. I mean, keep in mind, if they, if it would be a recorded meeting, I would say as little as possible.
Including now.
It, it's, yeah, it's, it's not a type of hearing to, uh. Ask any and all questions about Mount Air. It's for your chance to hear their side of the case and close the year.
Make a judgment on that.
That's correct.
So what are your dates again?
Uh, the tenth or the twenty-ninth is the best for me, but now, if I can't make it, that's fine.
Eighth, well, I think the eighteenth's out, so we've already got some scheduled, so eighth, tenth, and twenty-ninth, is what we've got left.
Twenty-ninth and me.
Twenty-nine. Is that good, or is that, that's a Monday?
Yeah, it is.
Four times.
That's, that's up to the board, but what you decide is just what we have to communicate to Mount Air. That's, that's why we gotta make the decisions.
Six thirty, represent?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll send that to their attorneys tomorrow and hopefully get an acceptance for that, and then I'll let you all know, and then I'll notice the meeting.
How much notice do you have to have?
Forty-eight hours.
H R. It's an Excel spreadsheet. Okay. Well, if it's possible, if you do it for the board before we get into budget sessions. You, you've got the total here on this column, but could you bring the other ones that have figures? Uh, all you gotta do is put a line and a formula, and it'll calculate itself.
See what.
In other words, you do.
Total of every call?
Every call.
Sure, yes, I can do that.
Okay, cause we got, you know, the six-month thing, and then what it would be for a year. But I like to see the total salaries, and when you get to bottom, it should be a quick fix, all you gotta do is put a formula. I like to see all the numbers. I'm, I'm not trying to speak out of term, but I think the other.
Uh, kinda related to that, when are we, when are, when are these budget workshops gonna happen?
Well, we haven't scheduled that.
Okay, when do they get scheduled?
Whenever the board reaches the schedule. Any, anytime from now, we can start doing that.
Looks like February, I mean, January, four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it may not be.
Typically, late February, if only early, should start that process. I mean, there are, there are no schedules for that, it's just sad to read it.
And they did start earlier, and we've been, we, Charlie.
Well, February is gonna be cool too, cause we'll have, um.
Oh, yeah, we've got our, um, intro to less government.
Is, is he short enough?
Tim, I need to get with you on that, I would like to attend.
So, I, I, I appreciate the board. Several board members have already turned in applications, I appreciate as well on to do that.
Turned in application.
Yes, for the.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
No, one more thing, but I'll bring it up more in detail when Lou Spayle's here, cause I think it's critically important that we address this before it comes up later this year again. The gentleman over at Españo del Sur, uh, Gil, Gil Pagan. Um, I, this is before I was elected, but he gave a very passionate speech directed, um. And great ire toward Hispanic liaison, uh, and not allowing them of foods. Um, problem with it is it, it seems to be a flagrant, um, violation of his First Amendment rights, because it's on public property. And he had a couple suggestions to make sure it doesn't happen again, like put in a non-discriminatory clause in the permit process. I noticed on both websites, they seem to be antithetical toward one another in ideology, and I can't help but think that maybe. I'm not sure if I'm saying her name right, this is speculation, but Eliana maybe doesn't want another viewpoint being represented by his group. Cause they, they both want, you know, what's best for the welfare of their Hispanic residents, um. Españo del Sur kinda teaches independence, where, in my opinion, um, Hispanic liaison seems to be. Teaching children to, to look for benefits rather than being self-sufficient, so they are kinda antithetical toward one another. I don't know if she deliberately discriminated against them, I'd like to hear her side as well, but. I, I wanna make sure that doesn't happen again, because the First, First Amendment is so paramount to our republic. I hope you all feel the same way regarding that. I don't wanna see anybody discriminated against, and clearly she did, it's public land, it's not a private club. I mean, if this, if a Satanist club were to say, I want to set up a booth for Hispanic festival, as grotesque as that may seem. They really have a right to do that, as much as I don't support that, um, but I wanna make sure all voices are heard. Regardless of who you think is right or wrong. So, I'd like to bring this up again with Louis, I wanna make sure it doesn't happen again, it's, it's, it's on my radar, it's extremely important, and I hope you all. Think that's important too.
So, so, so all that issue, you're correct, but my recollection is that Alana. Made the decision on behalf of Hispanic liaison to deny the, their request for food. Myself and the chief of police had a meeting with her to address the First Amendment issues there.
Right.
Saying that, that, that couldn't be done, uh, just like, that couldn't be prohibited for being on the sidewalk. It was a, it was a public place, they have a right to be there. It's not a private event, it's a public event. So the public is allowed to attend, but you read their rules or not, that is their, their, in fact. So that was addressed, um, that individual ended up not coming to the event at all, so there was no. Uh, discrimination that, that took place, because he, he was not in attendance at, at the, uh.
I have email correspondence with him and her, where she says you're not allowed to come, so, I don't have any correspondence, of course, with the town. You know, employees.
And you're right, but, but him, first saying he's not welcome is not blocking his First Amendment. The First Amendment violation would have been if he came and she told him he couldn't leave it, and we covered that and said, if he comes and wants to be seen. Now, the police department is not gonna ask him to leave, he has a right to be.
But in her correspondence, she states that, you know, your application has been denied. So was he supposed to escalate that to the town? Cause he, he obviously didn't. Did you guys ever converse with Gil? Gil Pagan?
The chief of police did, yes.
The chief of police did have a conversation with? Okay, he, he didn't tell me that.
Okay, so the other thing too is you have the email correspondence between them. That's them and not the town.
That's correct.
So even though I know you wanna, you wanted to mention it, but we, we really wouldn't have any say so over what she. She said what she wanted to do to her organization.
Certainly.
The town had already addressed it with them, so the town didn't, didn't discriminate. It was the organizations that did that, so we don't have anything to do with. Policy of an organization, and she decided that they, they were not there. She didn't want them there, but the town did not say that they couldn't be there.
Okay, well, it's not up to her to say whether or not she wants any, anybody with a company representation that. She, she's not allowed to say that, because the, the festival is on public land. Now, if she had a private club all day long, she could, she could discriminate, and that's perfectly fine. But the fact that it's on a public street, she's not allowed, I don't know if Gil, um, you know, tried to, maybe he just kinda threw his hands up and he gave up. I kinda have a hard time believing that, especially after hearing his speech that night, that he just kind of, you know, capitulated. I don't, I don't necessarily believe that, I just want, guys, I just wanna make sure it doesn't happen again. I wanna make sure that the young kids are, um, shown both sides of this equation.
Say both sides, what are you speaking about?
No, I'm just like, so he's, he's advocating, he's, he's obviously more conservative, um. Eliana's probably more of, um, of, you know, a leftist, so I wanna make sure that both sides are, are shown, I. That she has a lot of young followers and people are very impressionable, so I just, I'd like, I'd like both sides to be shown, is all I'm saying.
I, I'm trying to figure out both sides of the way. I mean, it's not, it's all what you're trying to say, but you won't say it. And you know what? Everybody's principles and values are theirs. And some principles and values don't match mine, so. I don't go or try to force them on anybody.
This, this is just his right to go to a booth and, and have his right to have, that's all I'm saying, that, that way he is free to communicate.
Your language i- is troublesome. The language you're using is very troublesome, because you can't say. What Eliana promotes or doesn't promote.
Well, I'm just, this is based on looking at her website, I'm looking, I'm looking at both websites.
At, at, at the end of the day, that's her right to do that.
Oh, absolutely.
It is her right to teach her children any kind of way she wants them.
A hundred percent, but it's not a right to discriminate against another group, like denying applications, that's, that's the only point.
What you're saying is, he has the right to come and promote his ideals.
Yes.
No, he doesn't.
It's on public land, yes, he does. This is, that, that's my whole point, it, it isn't contact. Not forcing it, this is not coercion, this is freedom.
To, to discriminate against Eliana either.
We're not discriminating against her, but she's discriminating against him, and that's, that's, that's what it happened.
Her point of view.
That's her, her point of view is her point of view, she isn't entitled, she's entitled to whatever she wants to believe.
But this is a big deal, and I don't even think it's something the town should even be involved in. The, the manager talked to the young man, told him he could come, he chose not to come, it should be closed.
So I didn't know that he had already talked to the town, based on the correspondence, it, it didn't seem that.
That's what. Alright.
Now, our next meeting is on Tuesday too, correct?
Yes.